Get started here. It's seven o'clock, so I'll call this work session to order. We'll start with Chief Jenkins.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for having me here this evening. Let me just brief Council on a couple of significant health services. Many of you already be aware of the fire at three and five Valley Street down here in the neighborhood and so on. The day of the fire, I did talk with the Fire Marshal. He did eliminate arrow and tell me that it started in the you see the pictures that were attached. Just inside of the door, there's a set of lights switches. He said that it looked like it's going there from the light switches. You can't see because of the darkness of the photo there where the lights could do that, but it looked like a plant pit from that flat box. You can smell it down toward the bottom floor. And I think there's some, there's another picture there from the out, from the outside view of some of the damage. But thankfully, definitely from Blue Man, we went and caught that phone and definitely from Blue Man's aggression from the cupcake shop and alerted everyone. A fire department, the fire was able to get it extinguished pretty quick. We responded to a special fire at three ten Valley Street. That's in Blue Man's. Oh, that's that was it. The first one is the luckiest one. That was a impacted individual that luckily was convenient for them. The strike that fired was the others on the back outside. But that individual, when I got there and dealt with him, located some what appeared to be heroin and or meth on his person. It's been sent to the lab. And once it gets back and it tests positive on it, felony charges on him for adult possession and hopefully we can get him some kind of treatment. Through drug court. Community engagements that we had this past month. We're going to be offered on Saturday, May twentieth, Memorial Day ceremony. The mayor and I attended that farmer's market. And the next big event we're going to try to have with partner in the Boys and Girls Club and a number of ACPD, the Fire Department down in here in Scottsdale, the Boys and Girls Club, bringing the public safety day for their kids down there. That'll be their last day before they start back school on the floor. So we're going to come down and let people all the kids. The make all the games, going to donate cupcakes, Blue Man's going to donate some things, freezing pops for the kids and stuff like that. So we're hoping to make that a great day for kids from the club. Our auxiliary officers donated sixty-three hours of their time to the towns this year. Right now, since January, it's a cost savings of about thirty thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Department news. We were and have been awarded the grant. It's a federal grant, but it's being managed by DCGS and that grant is going to enable us to purchase all of our body armor for our police officers. They'll actually allow me to purchase some of the rifle glass and plates and a small ballistic shield for the officers in the field. And then nobody had talked about video equipment for the village around the police department. So we put that expense in this grant as well. So we'll be purchasing hopefully four to fifteen cameras for the outside of the police department. We've also been working with T-Mobile. As many of you are well aware, in the point in Horizon or Century One, I guess it's right speed now goes down. We don't have access to email or to our digital ticketing system, the ability to give it a right reports and things like that. So we've been peeing in a hotspot through T-Mobile. T-Mobile actually has three cell towers that are relatively close or within the town of Scottsdale. And the T-Mobile put it in one of our officer's cars and he was able to go as far as Howardville up towards Green, Green Man country store and has it, it's about ninety-nine percent, no over ninety-nine percent effective. So we hardly lose any access to building. We were also aided to get a hotspot for the police department itself. So if right speed goes down, this system automatically will take over and internet is like we never lost. And I guess for me, I know I've been working with Javier and Becky a little bit and trying to do a cost analysis. The amount versus what switching our hotspots over to T-Mobile. And I think we'll save what about eighteen plus dollars a month?
Yeah, and we'll save up in the budget too.
We'll stay well within budget. So I'd like to be able to make that switch with T-Mobile if we could. I guess the bigger question for council to consider is Vicar Hall goes down as well. What email do we want to consider? The additional funding to be able to keep you all accessible with email. Yeah, I think if we had an emergency event, Mayor, you had to come in or council members say to come in and work during an emergency event, at least you would have access to email and be able to communicate. We're able to get it through T-Mobile's government contract and what was it, thirty-seven eighty a month? But we can get it all in one package, sticking four to five mobile hotspots. I think I will, Becky and I talked about the hotspot for the farmer's market. Then for the police department and we have the one inside of quick feeding and then the one up here.
Do we talk about actual modems or just the smaller hotspots because they offer two?
Yes. So that's a very good question. So the smaller hotspots actually go with the officers. And I believe the, the market, the farmer's market down here has the small. And then we go to the computer and they'll, it's a hotspot for the computer. I'm also talking about a hotspot that's actually wired into the police department itself, which impacts the email. So the hotspots impact our report writing abilities, digit ticket, email in the field and things like that. This hotspot in the police department, if email goes down through bright speed, we're, we're ready to watch for hours, days, I think the last, the longest period, not three or four days.
I've got a little experience with this and with the hotspots, the one, and this has been a couple of years now, but they have to be recharged. They run down and you have to recharge them. So you'd have to have rechargeable capabilities in your vehicle, just like you do a cell phone. And I'm not sure how the, the commercial type compares with the residential type, but two years ago, I got fed up with Century Lane. They call themselves something else now. I ordered a, a modem from T-Mobile, plugged it in, pair of my devices is not quick. So I've never had a problem with it.
So the little mobile hotspots, we keep them plugged in and they're charged either through the computer or through the car. That's how they stay charged. Inside the police department is hardwired into the, the buildings of Apple. So if right speed goes down, whole Century Lane goes down, T-Mobile kick right over just like your home does and should be seamless for us.
So when like the wifi and phone line out of the month, I think it was, would this be immune to that or would it be on the same?
It's still with Verizon. The cell phone tower. They are offering public safety packages for cell phones and they asked us about that. I didn't know that was something that we wanted to explore with the town's cell phones. Insertability. But I do believe that the, the computer hotspots were in the cars certainly are working a lot better in the field than the Verizon hotspots do. And then the right speed hotspot that we have wired into the police department is certainly working better than right speed. So I think we stay under budget. Come right in at budget. Other than you all decided you all wanted the hotspot from T-Mobile for your officers to stay in and here. So you all will stay active and plug in during any type of an emergency. There'll be an additional what thirty-seven eighty a month.
From the state, I guess that would be worth it.
Thanks. I think if you have an emergency, certainly the Century One bright, like what it is now, this will go down because it goes down without an emergency. So that's the time you do need to communicate with the state and federal emergency managing agencies. So you need to communicate.
And the emergency management coordinator, I think, is the town administrator for the town. They have to be able to release funds and things like that. So in an emergency, I think it would be good to have that here. And it also begs the question about battery charging. You know, we have these at home, these small devices. They can also jump your car battery, but they can be, it's a lithium battery that can be used to power devices. And we use them in the, in the event of power failures all the time to charge phones and computers and things like that. They're less than fifty dollars. They work really reliably. We might ought to get a couple of those for the year as well.
I remember a couple of years ago, it may have been doing that July twenty-eighth microburst. And invited a town administrator to go up to the house, have a cup of coffee around the town from my living room. And he did. Because I had, I had power and I had this T-Mobile.
So, um, so you and I, I know residential is different than government, but you run just out of hotspot?
No, I don't have a hotspot. I have a modem about as big as
Okay, but you, you have T-Mobile that's better. Oh, never mind.
Yeah, that's it. Now the hotspots are about like a damn cell phone and carrying around with you, right?
This, this one inside the building is a little bit bigger than the, the, the mobile ones that you're talking about. This one's, it's a wide. And it's sitting in the window next to East Main Street. It's about that big. But when we put it in the cage to secure it, couldn't get out all that metal through the block. So we sit it in the window five G. We intentionally unplug the internet through bright speed just to see how T-Mobile would and it kick right over the wall. Seamless. I guess the only question I ask is, are there any brights?
Well, that was, that was getting to.
Right.
That's exactly what I was getting to.
I mean, I guess redundancy, it's good. I mean.
I, I don't know. I mean, if council would like it, I would really have John and I do a deep dive to see if, you know, maybe it's worth and you guys are impacted by.
Yeah, that Monday, everything went out.
Right. Right.
So I'm not sure. Maybe we just look at, you know, wait with bright speed and switch over to T-Mobile. If they have that capability for us, I can certainly explore.
It's worth exploring, I think.
But my suggestion and what my ask is today is I think for the police department, it would be beneficial if we certainly want to T-Mobile hotspots for our cars and for our window. Would you all like for me to look at thirty-seven eighty or this spot here? And then I'll do some more research.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be prudent.
Maybe we'll be saving money.
If we can save more money, great, but certainly as a redundancy to Meredith's point, it's either way, it's a win-win, I think, to get that in.
Okay, move forward.
Yep.
I did have an opportunity to speak with the pharmacist and the worker at Rite Aid. No, I'm concerned, but one of the workers that potentially ends up there. When I met with the pharmacist and the worker, the lady that was involved in this situation did tell me that the individual that coming to the store was very upset. And while we was speaking to her, that spit would come out. Not on, but it was not intentional. Spit on.
I feel better about that. So thank you for following up.
They've had some, I think things might be getting worked out a little bit better now that they've been open for a little bit and tensions aren't as high because I haven't gotten any more complaints. After I went up and spoke to them about this, they have our names and numbers. They call us if they need anything, but I don't have gotten one of their call up there since I went up and visited with them there and that. Give them some options about banning people out of the store and know they talked to their corporate company, but I don't know if anyone's been banned.
Well, I was in there recently and I have to say, I really commend the pharmacist who was on duty that day. I was asking for some advice. And my daughter noticed someone who looked somewhat suspicious and he went out and said, can I help you with something? And the guy was a little sketchy and he left, but he was very proactive about engaging on that. So I have to commend them for that. They're really making sure everybody's safe. So it's nice that they have your contact and for you to grow up there.
I know we had had some discussion in the past with everyone about the self-contained heaters and refrigerate, uh, therapy issues that we had here when access was not available. Well, we were able to locate a small unit. Picture is here that portable AC plus heat before anybody could even come to see what it was. That's a little formal unit, uh, with a space in bottom. Mr. Payne actually had a line on me. And talking to the, the company that has the unit, even saying that this unit right here was being perfectly given to be able to put in the old jail down there. It's got two vents. Come off the back of this unit. It approved, our officer will take that window out, will re-friend it and then grow. It's got all the fittings and stuff. We have vent pipes and stuff on this one. We've built the vent pipes. It's a field shield, put the two vent pipes come out, we put the one that back in, rebuild it. But they, this is a fairly new unit. It's been used one time and I don't know. It's a twelve hundred dollar unit and they will let it go for fifty for us. So we didn't want to go forward with anything on that until we had an opportunity to have a discussion about where and how to move forward with the purchase of this unit.
Absolutely. I thought we discussed it last time.
Before we say absolutely, yes, it's a good idea, but we need to decide where the four fifty's coming from. We don't want to take it out of the police budget. Should we take it out of the capital improvements budget? Where will it fall under? Can you get it with part of the ten thousand?
That money's spoken. I mean, down to the dollars that grant is spread.
We have two weeks left.
Yeah, is there surplus that we can apply towards that?
I have to look and review that. So I can come back with you with information. But it's pretty critical for me to wrap up the budget year, but I'm at a dime between the event planning. So once I have that on my to-do list, Greg and me know our budget pretty well between the PD. So we can probably give you a quick yes for now. We'll see what leeway we have.
Forgive me. I should know this, but I'm embarrassed that I don't. Does our, this whole year starts July first or August first?
I don't picture spending all that phone line that we, so aside for that.
I can't imagine there's not a place we can put four hundred and fifty dollars for.
Or you can delay the plan.
Yeah. But well, we can, we can commit and do it now and just roll it.
It's free installation. You've got to go do some, that's, that's great. Yep, that's five dollars there.
I think it's hard to pass up an opportunity like that.
Is anybody using that space currently or are you waiting till you get completely finished with it?
Yeah, we're not gonna, we're not using it yet. Number one, we haven't cut that over the air conditioner all back there because it was really ruining the sheet off wall. And then it was running down the wall and it was getting messy. So we've got three quarters, two thirds of the floor painted. We actually cleaned the old jail cell and it's the etching out of the floor. I had some etching material that came brought in, which etched the floor. It just needs to have colored paint done on it. Once we get it painted, we'll put all the other stuff inside the cell now. It's all cleaned out. And then we'll leave to do the window unit and then we'll paint the walls and the cell.
Okay. So we need to decide where the where, where the four fifty's coming out of? And if we want to do it before July first.
If there's left of money in the budget this year, I hope to go before July first.
Absolutely. Before the hot weather really sets in.
Can y'all have a suggestion? Javier, can y'all have any suggestions for that for us for next week?
So what we could do is look at it in between then and that and next week and then just get you like a good budget line. And then double check on anything that we need approval from you guys. So I just need to come back with the a little bit more financial information.
Will we miss this opportunity from a timeframe if we wait a week? Okay.
We're gonna be okay. I think we have five hundred dollars in our this current nearest operating budget, but I don't know that we've spent anything out of it. I'm just not sure.
You have some lines that I think, but I want to double check because you want to come in right on the budget.
I would say we had one, but we had a toll card go down ten weeks ago and it's false speed to get it fixed. So him and I've been working and looking at the budget just to make sure that we don't go over.
And I want to make sure that it's possible, that everything's possible, but.
Is this going to come up private individuals or?
I will tell you that it's a company in Charlottesville that owns this unit, but it was actually Mr. Payne that set up.
Well, I'm asking, would they be interested in upfronting it to us with promise of payment, you know, by July?
I think the means are money. It's to go.
Does it come with any kind of warranty?
But they would have, still have the manufacturer's warranty.
If it's transferable, yeah, if it's transferable.
Usually they are for those, but yes, it's smart to check if you need to.
Okay. Any other questions for the chief?
I just have a couple of comments, chief, on your points. The on the fire across the street, number one for you all, I sent out an email because I was down here to alert you. Is that what you want me to do? I sent it to town council. Did you get it? Javier, Bill's not, doesn't seem to be getting his email reliably again. Cause I sent it to town council and everyone to make sure everybody knew. The other thing I was down, when I was down here, I was talking to a lot of the, you know, the business people were all down here because they were working that day and they'd gathered out in front of Lucky's here. And there were a lot of questions about and concerns about getting alerted in the future. And I've tried to start looking at alerting systems where people could register for things like this. I don't think it would fall under code red in Albemarle, but I think we need some kind of pardon?
You have to go request a PCC for them to send it out. I don't think those are situations, but correct.
Okay, well, we need, so the people were asking, how do we as business owners or the residents in the apartments upstairs and things like that? How do they get alerted if there is an emergency, fire, flooding or otherwise? I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's something that council really needs to look at seriously. We could have people register. We have, I think, information from their business licenses and things like that, but you know, if it weren't for that officer having been here about the business people next door responding, there are a whole lot of really, you know, just blessings in that whole thing. The ability of our own fire department to respond so quickly, that could have spread easily and we could have had a much bigger event on our hands. And people are concerned and they want to be notified. So.
And maybe I'm just naive. I feel like it could possibly be easy then we're very small.
I think so.
And then we could get email information or cell phone information, whichever way we want to do it from all of the business owners here in town and have a list for that, you know, just all together in one list where just alert fire.
Right.
It was a fire, they passed down the street and send it out and they'll get it. And then maybe have another one for residents upstairs.
Well, anybody who wants to register, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, is there still, you know, it used to be a thing called reverse nine one one. Do they still have that?
Plus, if you use our, talk with the pump house, we could also.
Yeah, well, that only gets so far.
Yeah, right. But it, it's something that we should look into. So.
With some kind of Facebook, if you're interested in having your name on it. Message or send it in or sign.
Yeah, and give permission. They register with us, give permission for us to alert them and then we can send out a mass email. The other thing, or a mass text, the other thing I would say is that communication was a little bit sketchy. So News Media was here before a lot of people were here. And then when I talked to Chief Grandstaff, he was in the middle of trying to get things under control and the media was trying to ask questions. So we talked before about a communication plan, who was responsible for communicating in these emergencies and things like that? And how we deal with the press and whatnot. So we have to be sure that the press and it's, you know, it's right for them to be here, but not necessarily to get in the way of activities. So we should have someone designated to actually do that interface. So there was, those were the two sort of observations I had to share on.
Maybe we could send it over to our, or something gratitude, appreciation for they responded in seven minutes.
They did. It was incredible.
Or maybe in the Scotland Monthly or something, just to say, hey, thank you so much for
I agree though.
Somehow get that word out that we really appreciate all they do.
I agree. And then about the cameras. There seems to be areas of graffiti down by the levee too.
What?
Pardon?
I did let you know.
I know, I saw that. Thank you, Jack. Graffiti down by the levee and it's dark back there too. I think maybe at some point we should consider a camera system for that area as well. There has been. Yeah. There has been, I don't know if you've seen the mural. I know I've talked to some of you, the horse mural that's gone up down there. I don't know who approved that. It certainly didn't come before council. I talked to Chief Grandstep about that and as it's part of the levee wall, there are FEMA regulations about painting on that and that you cannot use. You can only use certain kinds of paint and there are certain stipulations. So that may have to come down. So we need to get a better control on this. We can't just have people painting things. I'm all for the artist community, believe me. But things just can't go up haphazardly.
It seems to me if we don't know who put it up there, then we could take it down.
Yes, if they haven't gotten approval.
They have the same level of communication they gave us.
The interesting thing was at the end of the VFW program on Memorial Day weekend, this lady came up to me and she says, have you seen what's on the wall down? I said, no ma'am, but I'll go look at it right now, which I did. And I saw two horses. I don't know who put two horses up there. I checked with the neighbors. I went to neighbors' houses. I said, have you seen who did this? Do you have any objection to it? Nobody had an objection to it. So get Cody and give him a paintbrush and bucket of paint and let him go down there and cover it up.
Let's make sure we're not just covering it up because if there's stipulations on how we have to cover that, it may have to be washed off.
Well, washing it probably.
Exactly.
Come off.
Exactly.
The town, they turned it under the bridge and it used to be graffiti in there, is it? Did you, I did too, but it's, it's great that that's, but how do people do that? That's great that that's been done. I think it's, it's like a broken window. As soon as it gets up, wash it off.
Yeah, I think we need like a phased implementation for this, right? If we can't afford it all at once, we need to designate areas where we'd like to have more visibility in the town and make sure that cameras are installed over time. So.
Fix it right away.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the chief?
No.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. favor or comment? Anything that really jumps out out of it? Pretty average, pretty routine.
Pretty average, pretty routine. We're having a light of seventy-nine percent of the health service in the county. A couple of those look like they have other forty-one percent.
Thank you for all that, you and the force do chief.
I might add, cause I've always seen it took something extra in there, but in the city of Charlottesville, their stats are all bad. Everything is increased. all bad, everything is increased, uh, as far as crime across the board, except for, um, one category, which was, you know, something like vandalism. But, uh, when it comes to no real rape, shooting, it's got to, uh, when you're in Charleston, please be alert, no way to walk.
Yep, that's the main thing, always be alert to your surroundings. Chamber of Commerce had a board meeting this past Wednesday. Uh, talked about the fourth of July, uh, there will be a farm, the fourth of July farmer's market. Uh, and there will be vendors, it's not, somebody thought it was going to be another yard sale, it's not, it's going to be vendors that sell real stuff. And vendors that sell food, so that'll be going on. Chambers also working on starting, we used to have a thing here called Fridays after four forty-five, that was BB's. Charleston had Fridays after five, well, we had Fridays after five forty-five and we're going to try to revitalize that another, maybe the end of July. Something at Canal Basin Music, maybe, uh, extend our beer permit over there or get a wine vendor, something, something for the town and then, uh, I think that was all we really honed in on. So ARB.
I was not even going to the meeting, I talked to Aaron before, I mean, meeting.
I can report, um, so staff met with the ARB chair and a member to just discuss how to handle ARB business, feed inventory or certificates of approval. Uh, with, with, uh, Mr. Longwood since his departure. Um, beyond that, we spoke on the exclusion of Morse Hill Road from our inventory. Um, ARB has a requirement where you have to, uh, assess the inventory from a public road, so we worked with Jim. Um, and a few staff members, so we wrote a carefully worded letter in which in the future we'll assess from, it's still within the historic district, but we'll have to assess from, uh, over there, it's Hardware Street, so that, 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 um, Morsell Road is actually a private road. Uh, we figured out, um, we're following up on Valero's, uh, which is, uh, the gas station right on East Main in regards to lighting, um, somebody brought it to our attention that it wasn't, there was a little bit of a bleeding on the light, which doesn't follow ARB rules around, uh, the canopy or around the, uh, lights shining down on the gas station. It's like getting across the street, and so we have rules on how bright that was supposed to be and we discussed it in ARB and we found that they went compliant once they installed it, so we're following up with them by email. Hopefully we'll report back in a month. Um, and then we had a presentation from, uh, Mr. Neighbors, owns that property down there, so he gave us a extensive um, review of his, um, work on the, uh, tobacco building, it's our, it's an old tobacco warehouse, if somebody's right. Um, since we asked him to come in as a, um, property under our poor condition, but he exhibited continued work on, um, I forgot the address, but the, uh, on the address and then we'll be following up with, uh, Stony Point Road fifteen twenty-five. Um, the new Montessori needs to go in front of ARB in regards to a ramp and, um, a gate around the loading dock over there, so we'll have more updates at the next meeting.
I was wondering if there's been any follow-up or any, uh, uh, question on the Stinson House? That's such a prominent building, it's kind of like that the Lord year. The one across the street, the, the big white building. And I think there's people living there now too, but, uh, it's such, it's kind of an eyesore and, and I think it could be, and I, I think that person owns it, has money, but I don't know why they, uh, people complained about that for a while too and I think there needs to be some sort of, you know, letter to them about or what, what their plans to fix it up as it's, uh.
Well, it's on our inventory and we've been following up with ARB compliance, so it's on the radar. If I can put it that way. Uh, I have to remember what the exact address is, but.
You know, just what I'm talking about, right?
I think so.
Big white building next, next to, next to Venus Park.
Okay, yeah, so that's on our inventory, but I have to look at it.
Do we know who owns it?
Yes.
Used to be a guy that lived in, lived in Waynesboro or something. So he's still on it?
Lewis too, I think. Yes, I mean, yeah, it's inside of.
Hey, any other questions, ARB related questions?
I have a quick, uh, chamber of questions. Uh, I had a couple of people ask me, do we have a contact for the fourth of July parade, if somebody wants to.
Always Tim Carr. Planning Commission, you were not able to go, right, and you went in his.
I did indeed.
Okay, so hear about the planning commission.
Okay, so I briefed them from things going on at, at council, uh, the committee assignments that we were consider redoing, um, not that anything had been decided, but just that it was on the agenda. Website and strategic plans, voted on the budget, um, voted on, um, meals tax increased from four point five to six point, point five. And that we'll have a public hearing on that this month, so I shared that with them. Um, I was asked to, I told them there was a mock-up and was asked to share the link, so I did share the link of the mock-up on the website with them as well as the points that we had collected in government services on the shortcomings of the existing site and what needed to be fixed, so that action item was completed. Um, they looked at home stays, that was on their agenda and short-term rentals and what they want to do about that, how many is too many? Questions about whether it should be regulated or not, and I think they left it where it should not necessarily be regulated because other properties aren't regulated in that same way. So that's the way they were leaning. Let's see. Subdivision ordinance, V dot approval for the development plans for the new subdivision on East Village. That went through. Um, they suggested a roundtable, I think Becky, didn't you suggest a roundtable with V dot, wasn't that?
And V dot and the chairman of the planning commission discussed that and recommended that, so we asked the commission to appoint two members and would ask the council to point two members and then staff. And depending on what we're talking about, perhaps a police, you know, but it's a good start, we would, the first roundtable meeting would be to talk about information they need for the comp plan. That, they thought that would be more productive and them coming to a meeting and and discussing if it could take a good while. But the good, and another good part of that is you have a roundtable developed where you have other V dot issues. We would have condoms.
So this was around the, um, sidewalk visions, the visions for sidewalks that should be built into the comp plan. Um, for safety and accessibility, um, historic walkability, you know, storage preservation, what do other communities do, that kind of thing. So this was in that context, but then other questions about that might be relevant to V dot came up, so it might be good to have a roundtable with them, if we have just two of us at the table as well as two planning commissioners, we don't have to advertise and go through all of that and we might just get a lot of information. Uh, the comp plan approach, um, Lincoln, uh, briefed them on the plan to complete the completion ETA, is that the end of twenty twenty-three, is that correct, yeah? And one of the things that they talked about was having a survey, I think the last time we did the comprehensive plan, there was a survey that went out and several people or a number of people responded. There was a great deal of discussion about the questions that should be on that survey. And, um, Mr. Lewis was looking, uh, engaging Survey Monkey to put out the survey. Survey Monkey costs thirty-nine dollars a month and you can get the survey service, they can do it for just the comp plan for thirty-nine dollars. There have been other times when we've talked about potential surveys with the community to do it for a year would cost about four hundred and fifty dollars. So if we think we can leverage Survey Monkey more broadly, we could take advantage of getting a yearly subscription. Or we can just go with the monthly subscription of thirty-nine dollars for just the comp plan. So I told them that I would bring that forward and see what you wanted to do about that. Any sense of if we could leverage it more broadly? Okay.
I don't know how often you survey. That work is worth four hundred, I think, if you buy this something, I mean, and you can do our advantage while we have it, it'd be good, but.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, I can't think of something surveys that we haven't set out often enough to warrant it.
Okay.
We, uh, we have workshops, we have town council meetings. We use an attendance tonight. Um, I mean, to me, that's a survey, then the public shows up here, if they hear that much about something. What, what's good, what's ten twenty-five dollars a month to make it convenient for them?
We still don't have that.
I mean, you, you have seven o'clock on a Monday night, you have, you know, moms with little kids who are, you know, cooking dinner and doing homework and bath time and everything else. It may be a case where they would be more engaged if there were other avenues of engagement. So I don't want to be too hard on attendance here, you know, having raised little kids, but nothing said, I don't know if we have an observing this.
Well, and it, you know, it came up in the strategic planning meetings as well that, you know, our audio visual equipment for meetings is horrible, it's really very difficult to attend online. So, um, that was one request that was made of if we had extra capital to, um, beef up our audio visual and, yeah, and Stevie did say that we could maybe leverage what Scan has put in. So maybe someone can follow up on that, but we need to take care of that, depends on how you want to engage with the community, but I thought, I thought I'd bring it up, but if we have no use for it, that's fine. Um, Commissioner Strassner, is that right, is that her last name? She had initially submitted her resignation but has since rescinded her resignation and so the team, I think, felt very good about that, they were happy.
That seems to be me a little bit, uh, concerning because apparently it was accepted, we put something on a line to advertise it. Somebody put their name into, to be part of that. And then she took it, so I think the person who put their name in and just advertising, I think they need to be discussed further, like if we accepted it, uh, and then we advertised it and then somebody did that, it seems like we should at the minimum, uh, explain to that person who put their name in about the situation and make sure they're okay with that. Because I think that's kind of like a slap in the face to say, here, we, we, we got somebody, we need an opening and he says, I'll do, I'll volunteer for it. And then we say, okay, forget it, uh, they changed their mind, so I, I mean, one of the, I saw, I heard about that and I thought, and I know, I like the neighbor and I like her intuition with everything, but there's a couple of things I thought about. We could have a, I don't know if we could have a sixth member or we could have uh, what, what like has been discussed for a member on the, the planning commission who would, would, we would eliminate the, the town person on the, by the logic. And that's member would be the fifth member. So I mean, I think that's really a discussion because I, I just think it's the proper thing to do.
Well, if it had gone that far, then there is a process question that we should clarify, I think. Um, there was also a question, I believe, um, about another commissioner's term expiring, right, Molly, Angie. Yeah, her, her position might be opening and nobody seemed to know quite what was the status of that. That would, right.
But if we don't, I think we need to look at that.
Is Molly not, she's willing to serve?
I didn't hear at that meeting, so you all have more current information.
I called her after the meeting last week and she's interested in continuing to serve, so she would request her reappointment.
Okay.
One thing I would follow up on, like you said, Council Heiser is I don't know that there was a formal, like your, I think your point is a good one, I don't know that there was a, like, somebody formally said, yes, we accept your resignation, like, I don't know that there's, I think she said, I think I might want to resign, I don't, so I think your point is maybe correct, may not be, I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Well, if the town administrator accepted that and put something on, it seems like that, that's by, by that, by half that action, he's accepted it and looking for somebody else. So to me, that's, uh, that's pretty clear. I mean, I, I mean, by a time and then all of a sudden they, I, I changed my mind two weeks later. You know, I don't think that'd be proper, you know, and somebody applies for it and they're doing interviews, you know, you can say, okay. But, but any trace, I think we, whoever we need an explanation to the frequency applied and let them know that, uh, we will keep them in line or we will bank them or or there's a change in situations, but I think it's just a little fuzzy there.
I think you're, you're, you make a good point about it being fuzzy.
Okay. Well, let's talk to Lisa and see what happens.
I got something about, uh, not a, uh, issue with the really, I think we probably missed a, this, I mentioned it to Becky just recently, but I think we missed, uh, something on the agenda. We have a public hearing next week on the Airbnb and, uh, I think that probably worth discussing because this is a kind of a new thing. Uh, we've never, we've never, we've never had a, uh, a Airbnb just installed, I mean, other places have been renovated and, uh, and they don't have a policy on this, I'm not sure what the, uh, planning commissions, how far they are on the policy on Airbnb and whether this falls in on that. Uh, but one of the things is we still have tourist lodging. And I looked up the, in the zoning ordinance and, and, and under tourist lodging, it's, it's a five-year permit. So maybe we should look at, I mean, I, I just think it should be a discussion that, that it's five-year permit, uh, it's, in other words, if this person, if he kept, kind of correct, was doing this, if he says, okay, I want a tourist lodging and we say, okay. And then it should be approved, but I think it should be approved with some conditions, so that, uh, if he sells it or if he's out of it, it's over. Unless, unless we say, okay, you can sell it to somebody else and they can have an Airbnb, I, I just think it's, uh, it's a, it's a kind of thing we've never had.
Where are our rights as far as being, say that?
What's that?
It's ARB, these have, I think, a five-year condition.
Okay, so they are.
Also have the option of charging of, uh, an annual fee.
So we call it Albemarle's Airbnb.
And maybe also can, if you want to, you can establish numerous regulations, such as do you want somebody to be able to have a house and put, okay, start to rent it out to, uh, accountable people and to come out here and party and, or do you want to require the owner to be on prerogative or nearby, that's what, and all, all in all, the law. There's, there are a lot of different things you could do.
So we're under there, uh, Albemarle, it'd be good to get that, maybe we'll send that out, Albemarle's policy and we could look at that for next.
That would be good and then also there's, there's, uh, there's, of course, there's a whole bunch of cities that have, have started the regulations too. And you might want to take.
Well, yeah, I've, I've had a couple of meetings about that and sometimes the person's got, the owner has to live on the property, be present on the property or you could have, have parking on, on the property, you can't have, there's all kinds of regulations and I know planning commissioners working on it, but.
May not have problems if county said, right, people turn them into party places and all of a sudden you're living in a suburban neighborhood and like, uh, continual weekend party going next door with, right, throw strangers. And, and so they, 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 they had to do an accident regulation for it.
So, so we could follow, maybe follow Albemarle's for this one until we have our own policy.
Or whatever else is, is a, there may be a better fit, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I would make sure too that we're not chasing this potential business over there.
Right, I agree.
With stopping Mr. Quay or anybody else from renting spots and putting those cabins on the other side of the block, man, the town is stopping off of them.
Right.
It's a good opportunity, I will make sure we don't chase them.
Right, and this is a trend that's not going to end anytime soon, I think we just need to decide how we want to handle them.
Yeah, and that's the thing, I, I, I kind of like to have something like that too, but he wanted three and then there's issues about three, if you have three that you have setbacks or what happens if, uh,
Well, I actually was saying, aren't there setbacks with the mobile?
Yeah, are we, it is our first mobile park, kind of, so to speak, you know, we don't have that in town, we've never had it, I don't think there, there's one mobile home in town right now, so it's all new, that's why I'm bringing this up because I don't want mobile homes popping up everywhere.
And just understand the government volume, there's only one.
What, what? That's, that's the thing, I, I. Well, if you want to split twenty out there, I don't know, you don't have to worry.
So, Council Heiser, one thing I would, I would say in defense of Mr. Quick would be. The, they are mobile, but they don't look mobile, first of all, and.
They're not double ones.
Yeah, that, well, they don't look mobile at all, they're, they're, the point of his. Request to the planning commission. Is to see would we allow for a potential of three. Not, he, he would probably do one at a time, a potential of three, and the idea is that. He's recognized the, the location is desirable, and the thought could be in the. The way it's, it's accepted is that it could be that if. Whatever condition we wanted to add, he could add different conditions to it, but they do not look mobile.
Right, I know, real nice, but what I'm saying is, is. This is all new, so they, I know they're gonna be strapped down, they're gonna have permanent foundations, I guess you gotta have that, but how far? Does he have a plan for, like, if he's at three, are they, are they close together, uh, where's the parking? I mean, I could go.
Didn't he bring them, he brought that all before us.
Did I miss the last council meeting, or did I dream that Kevin stood up here and told us everything?
He did.
Do, and how he wanted to do it.
He did, and he showed them everything.
Been through all this.
He came to the planning commission, he came to the town council, we gave a. Vote of support, at least notionally, and move forward. But I think it is important for the, the planning commission to take that under advisement. The other thing that I mentioned is alternative dwelling units, like mother-in-law apartments and things like that, we're starting to, I I've started to read where. Their. Towns and cities are building in ordinances that you can have like one per. So much square footage on your property so that people don't have to come if they want to build a mother-in-law suite or something like that. So it may be something that the planning commission looks at as well.
All right, what is the government services board? Is that the government services committee?
Committee, actually.
Could be a committee, you can't call yourself a board.
Yeah. Um, we. We had a meeting last week, and a lot of these things are covered in, in the agenda, and. I think it's got several things, I, we haven't get finished a minute yet, but the main thing we dealt with was concerns with maintenance. Uh, and also Lindsay Street, and we're still waiting on Miss Utilities to mark Lindsay Street to put a parking sign there. And it seems like they're not parking like they were before on the street. So that seems to be better, but there's no, the parking sign's been ordered, but we have, we have to find out, because there's a lot of uh. You know, lines and things like that under that street, so we.
We're okay, yeah. Um, I walk over there as a day that three signs there. Have you seen them?
No.
No.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
One, one is says no parking, and it looks like uh. Uh, bathroom towels, the paint's blackened up, the other one says no outlet, you can't read it harder from the street if you're driving. And then there's another no parking, so yeah, we have.
Right.
But it's just exactly like the rest of the signs in this town, it looks like crap.
Yeah.
It's old, it's fallen over, and it's been discussed, you know, for over two years, and nobody can get it right. But the sign is just there, no parking, no parking, no outlet. Just get out of your car and read it, because by the time the park is too late.
Thank you very much. Put the one sign, it's supposed to be installed over there by the Airbnb, halfway up the hill, but we can't do that yet, and maybe you can take a look at where it goes once it happens, because. Uh, I have an eye.
That is what I asked to be done last meeting. Okay.
We what?
I asked the chief to see you get a sign and put it where you want it over there, and if it hasn't been done yet, we will get it done ASAP.
Well, we gotta wait till, till Miss Utilities goes. We can't do that without that.
I mean, when the sign's already ordered.
So we're just waiting on delivery?
No, we're waiting to make sure we don't dig into.
Oh, so that sign is here? Well, Miss Utility should be easy to call, right? How long is it there?
Maybe do it again until halfway up the hill.
Uh, in a week?
Think so, yeah.
It's never.
Never, new email.
Yeah.
They're usually, there's usually not that, it doesn't usually take that long for a response.
Yeah, y'all, let me check on that tomorrow. Please, thank you.
Make sure they do it upside up on the building.
They know where to do it. Treasurer report. Any treasurer's report?
We go back to this just a second, this general provisions.
Yeah.
I know that this was the report you all discussed at your last meeting, although I was just. So if there's something I bring back to you all for a doc. Yeah, that document, or. Because I know that some of the recommendations were not deleted from this, or not added. So you all just want to take time and, and study it? Instead of what do you want for your documents for general provisions?
I think we need to study it and talk about it, and.
I thought we got rid of financial committee.
I thought we did too, and Parks and Rec Committee, all that falls under Government Services.
Right.
You don't need two more committees that nobody's gonna volunteer to serve on.
And we did agree to get rid of beautification.
Right.
And I think the.
Connected.
Right, the ones that are inactive should just.
There's really only two. No, there's only three that are active, the Airbnb, the planning commission, the government service.
I'd really like to see an events and tourism on them, I think we could really use some help there.
Well, we did, and um. Meredith started out with events when she came on, and unfortunately, it hit at batteau. Festival time, and she kinda got a little overwhelmed with all that was happening at one time, because she hadn't done it before, which was understandable. So she asked that she'd be taken off of that, and then Alex, with his degree in events. Has taken that over somewhat, and uh.
Does that include the full tourism suite too, or just events?
Whatever you want.
Be careful what you say.
So let's uh. Read this general provision thing and talk about it later. Now, treasurer's report.
So, I'm focusing on wrapping up our annual budget, uh, that includes me just getting. My final idea of revenue coming in, and expenses that need to go out for June thirty-first, so I'll be working with Becky about that. To make sure we wrap up the end of the year correctly, uh, that we stay within budget. Uh, that all our revenue that we need to get for this annual year falls within this fiscal calendar. And the same for expenses, uh, probably gonna have a tight week. Uh, working on the financial report, while also doing a little bit of event planning. So I hope and I'll try to do the best of my ability to get a financial report to you guys out, uh, Thursday or Monday. Um, beyond that, I think there's gonna be a primary focus on my side to make sure we wrap up the budget. Because once you wrap it up, we'll just be hopping right into establishing next year's budget, and continuing the same. Um, beyond that, we got our audit back. Um, and it looks relatively well, so we can share a little bit of information on that. Um. And I think most of it is, I'll have the table a few things as we get into our busy season, which is the end of. Um. Fiscal calendar and then two events, so some stuff will wait about a month, but um, I'm prioritizing the most important things for the month.
Still waiting on the management, the auditors, and they're just, they sort of was dated May seventeen, and I haven't seen that. And they haven't sent the, the copy for you all, and there's some things that I need to get in the panel. But this is the audit ending twenty-two, so we're a year behind, because they're very late getting that report due. And that kind of, very true.
And by August October, we'll be sitting down with them for the audit of this. So it's that late that I'm already ran enough to make sure I have everything in order for our next audit.
Questions for the treasurer? Um, my report is short, I participated in the VFW Memorial. Service on the twenty-eighth of, of last month, and laid a wreath on us in honor of the uh, veterans for the town. Um. Mr. Briscoe joined me there a little bit late, towards the end of the program, but he was there. Uh, other than that, I've been sort of trying to keep in constant, well, pretty constant contact with uh, Ms. Carter. And uh, try to get her acclimated to her. Position here and answer any questions she might have had, so that was that. Uh, before, if Mr. Bowling's permission, before we ask for a report from the town attorney, I'd like to ask if Supervisor Price has anything she needs to. Would like to tell us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, not a whole lot, I'm, I'm gonna be on, be on next week, I'm going up to DC on Monday afternoon. For the funeral service at Army, this is on this for me that evening. Um, the biggest thing I would talk about though is that she probably saw the word, it's a clue, the assumption of a purchase. Contract for hundred and sixty-two acres, basically on three sides of the Van Station up on twenty-nine war. To protect the six hundred million dollar economic impact that that station has annually. For all of Ohio County is part of the nine point two billion that the defense industry does. In conjunction with the seventy-five acres currently with the Van Station, the four sixty-two. That gets that a little with the five hundred acres, then you've got North Fork, which was another five hundred acres from Brady County, this set aside. Five hundred acres, which gives us fifteen hundred acres in very close proximity. Words, industrial, um, military, defense, uh, educational innovation. Work that we make will really be a boon to that uh, sector of our economy here in the region. And not just welcome Rock County, so that's really the biggest thing that we've done. Uh, earlier this week, we did a groundbreaking for the post complex, and again, August report. And buying charge to Almar, um, there's graduation season, seven graduations, um. If, as much as sometimes we feel kind of beaten down by the world, I'll tell you, don't miss these graduations. It really helps us to see young people who are getting ready to head out, and, you know, they'll be the next generation of leaders. But other than that, I'm just really here to answer any questions that you all might have for me, since I will be missing the next year.
Anyone have any questions? Yes, sir.
Supervisor Price, that. I see the supervisor price high. Um, can you uh, address the? Uh. I guess we've got the town hall meetings coming up about a proposed uh. Stair path, bike way, pedestrian path on Route twenty, and how that's gonna affect. Scottsville and this traffic, um. I don't, I haven't heard too much about it, and no one's approached me about it, but uh, I can't help but think that, you know. A shared use pathways gonna affect the traffic, you know, coming in and out of Scottsville, even though it's, you know, miles away.
Yeah, the, uh, about a year and a half this year ago, I apologize, I can't be more specific, there was a proposal to have a shared view paths down the median. From north of sixty-four down to fifty-three, uh, I actually walked that path in any way, and said there is no way. When the guy was free, I could support putting a path, I think, on the twenty there. Speeding on this forty-five, the average speed of vehicles probably closer to fifty-five to sixty, and there were about four times places. Where pedestrians or bicyclists would have to pause and avoid the proximity of traffic. So I went back and proposed that instead, if you, if you think of the intersections, it's kind of visually. On the right-hand side of the northbound lane. To put the path there, but that would require two changes at the clover lead. Where currently, if you're going north, and you wanna get on sixty-four west, there's a right-hand clover lead where you loop around. Similarly, if you're coming east on sixty-four, and you wanna go on twenty north, there's a clover lead, and then you've got merging traffic. So what my, my suggestion was, would to be to change those from the merge to solid right-hand turns. That would require the vehicles to come almost to a complete stop, there you go. Um, if I can come up to the image of that's easier to tell, so. But my suggestion would be to be to turn, whoa, sorry, this into a right-hand turn here, rather than the merge. So that the cars going northbound on twenty would pretty much have to come to a stop to make a hard right turn. Similarly, down here, that it would be a right-hand turn rather than the merge, because anyone trying to pass on this side of the road. Through that double merge, uh, at the speeds the cars are going, is just not safe.
I mean, it's scary. It's getting, you're on finally twenty, and you're trying to get out of sixty-four.
Absolutely, whereas what had initially been proposed was to go down the median. But you'd have crossing traffic here, 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 here. All the way down to fifty-three, and that, I mean, there's just no way, I mean, you know, you'd have to put Jersey barriers ten feet high before I felt safe.
But supervisor, don't we have a proposed DDI, diverting diamond interchange at the same location?
I, I don't know that that's proposed here right now, I don't recall that. Uh, we do have a traffic circle being proposed down here at twenty, and actually approved twenty and fifty-three.
But that's in the same proximity.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking what, three tons of a mile?
I, I, I don't, that's probably about right, Council Payne, so I'm waiting to actually see how this discussion goes. Because I do believe that is a safe route, the one that I've, I proposed, but where the concern is with VDOT. Is because this currently is a merge where you don't have to stop, they're, they're, they're concerned, what would the traffic count be? Going east on sixty-four, would it back up traffic into the travel lane there? Um, there's not the same concern up here making a right turn, because you're coming off of twenty to get on to sixty-four. So the, the other proposals that at different times had come up, had been to put a tunnel in your sixty-four. But, you know, the distance for that, um, and tunnels get dank and smelly and all of that kind of stuff. Um, and then we also look coming over here to the other side, PBCC. But that posed other land acquisition or access easement issues, and so. I'm, I'm, Council Payne, I'm looking to see what this actual proposal is as well, I haven't seen it. To me, you know, as, as supervisors, we don't generally get stuff before it's made available to the public, um.
There's a whole lot going on there, though.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, but I, 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 I'm hopeful, I, I, I won't even go so far as to say optimistic, but I'm hopeful. That if, if that is approved, that would then connect the city of Charlottesville, the county of Almar. On what I think would be a pretty safe access through there for both pedestrians and bicycles.
Okay, but thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Other questions?
I have one question, um, do you know what the status, uh, it was my understanding that was a grant applied for to put a. Fire truck in the station up here on six.
Seventeen.
There, there was a grant applied, but, yeah, stations.
I think we do have a new truck coming, I apologize, I can't tell you.
Yeah, I was wondering if the grant came through, because the last I heard, the grant was still up in the air, and I don't know if it came through or not.
Can I actually dependently, I thought I saw something that said that that was coming through, but, you know, let, let me check.
If you could check, then get back to us, that would. No, no. Understood.
But that's, they see a fire truck and not a Scottsville volunteer fire truck?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so it's two different entities, even though they work together.
Well, except what's, what the county has moved towards is clarification of the ownership on all of the. Because over the decades, there had been kind of differences in how, but what in a different station. And we're trying to get much more uniform in terms of clarification of the ownership, again, that's, let me, I'll, let me get back to you with the.
Yeah, I think we also should, I spoke to Chief Grandstaff, a few people. I think we need some clarification impact, should that come through, because it will impact us.
We also have another state program, the thirty additional firefighters, that's been submitted, and we're waiting to hear back on that for the county. Uh, I think we've already gotten with the last several years, two different state grants for a total of twenty firefighters, we have to do that. Um, as, as everyone is aware, volunteerism is a substantial challenge these days across the board. I mean, everything from, you know, local nonprofits, um, and, you know, fire and rescue has been one of the most significant areas. Impacting on that side of responsibilities and services that they provide, so. We've been working hard to try and, it's upon me to help pay for some of that.
Well, and it's not just volunteers, it's my understanding, the last time. Well, and it's not just volunteers. It's my understanding, the last time I checked, there were like seven or eight openings.
But we've made, we've made substantial progress in closing the gap, both in law enforcement and fire and rescue. Um, so we're, we're closing that. It's been about three or four year process.
So you think it's a smaller number now?
It, it, we're closing the gap. I can't tell you.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that uh you knew about an incident last month. We had uh about the gentleman that threw lion parking lot. That had a cardiac event. And we couldn't get a rescue squad because they were tied up at Martha Jefferson's. So the chief. Got the man in the patrol car, took him to PVCC where the unit met him and took him onto the hospital. He survived. But it seems like one of the reasons the county took over our rescue squad is because we couldn't provide the service that they, we, they thought we should. And that's not very good service if we have. Have a guy having a heart attack and food lying and there's nobody to come take it.
Well, the, the challenge of course is having sufficient people not only totally to man all of your positions, but. Them being able to be where you need them at the time you're needed. And every one of the stations is subject. Being on call and then another station or stations having to do backup. We don't have enough people to have multiple squads at each station.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that incident that happened here and. And fortunately, thanks to the chief, getting him to rendezvous with the rescue squad up the road saved his life.
Yeah, I was not aware of that specific, but I do know that we are pretty remote from Montshello. Um, sixteen, I don't know the number, sixteen, fifteen, yeah. Right, so we've got, I guess, three that have a potential, but they're all twenty, thirty minutes away.
Understand. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Bowling, you got anything you wanna?
Yes, I'll start out by asking the question, we are in track. Oh, yeah, I could get Ms. Carter a contract.
On the contract. And instead of saying twenty-nine hours a week, it said twenty-five hours a week. So we just need to correct that and say the twenty-nine that we agreed to. Yeah, so we, we had agreed to in council meeting that it would be twenty-nine hours per week and somehow or another the contract came out with twenty-five.
Wanted to make sure. And it's a set amount, so it doesn't really, um, generally work more than that or sometimes less. So it'll work out. But do I need to bring that back to them next week to take official action?
Yes.
So it's a matter of record.
Yeah, and then get it signed. And I told, I told, I told, oh, yeah, and I would update you on the reconsification. That's supposed to be here in September. Then I asked, oh, yeah, about the electronic version, which is equally but not more. Hardcover, three hundred plus page document. And, oh, yeah, did you ever finish a check on that?
Yeah, so the site of Civic Plus app handles our reconsification. Told me that once the website is live, it's relatively easy and pretty quick. That they can uh transfer over. So we have our code of ordinance is online and, like you said, the most important thing, easily searchable for us.
So when is the website, so are you staying posted live?
Yeah, so.
They're supposed to deliver content by the end of this month and then we'll start getting trained next month. So I think live in August is sort of what I'm thinking about. Yeah, it is. It is. And uh, Councilor Heisen, just so that you know, we're meeting on Wednesday, two thirty. It's a Zoom meeting. It strikes me. If you're available, you should join the call. I can, if you ping me, I'll get you the Zoom details.
And they're not, that's exciting. So I've been working with um. Ms. Carter and also Matt Williams leading and I had one other matter involving ARB uh. That we discovered another property that didn't have access on a public road and started stepping off the list. Is that all resolved?
Yeah, so we, we found, we had one of our. Four commissioners bring it up to me during ARB meeting, or one of our board members. Um, forgot the two addresses, but I went out there and reviewed them and used the same standard we had for Moore's Hill. And we just have to make sure in future inventories to take a look at it from a public road.
Yeah, it has to be on a public road because that's what you're bored with.
Yeah, so for example, one of them, we probably won't see like flaking on a window. But if the roof was gone, we could probably see that from the road and they're like poor condition at that point.
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Bowling?
No, but I have one related point that I think we should consider. We were talking, Becky and I, the other day and it struck me, um. DMV is leaving, right? And the last day is the sixteenth.
Twenty-second.
Or twenty-second, okay, twenty-second. Um, after that, there won't be a third person up here in the office. So typically having the three of them up leaves the office open on any given day. So Javier and Becky both work late nights for meetings like this, planning commission and others. And there might be times where we don't have office coverage. Um, so I think it's something that we need to think about. Uh, as an impact with DMV and do it soon because it would be bad if people come to do something in the office. And arbitrarily, it's just closed because there's nobody here. Um, so we have to figure out how to handle that.
Find out what those days and times are.
One of, they're not here. One of the thing, just to follow up on both of you counselors is. It's, it's an interesting perspective thing because I know. People in the town, some people in the town are unhappy that the DMV is leaving. Understand, that's understandable. When the DMV came, it actually increased. The amount of availability we had for the office. In other words, there were, there, over the number of years. There have been lots of times where the office wasn't open at all for a day or half a day or so, so. In a sense, we're used to a much higher access at the moment. So the question is, do we wanna keep that high level? Debatable whether we do or don't, but if we dropped back to where what was more normal in the past. It's not out of the question. We could say, you know, on Tuesdays from ten to two, they're, they're not here or something. In other words, if it was posted. So it just, I'm only making the point that where we've gone to, it has been because we've had the office. And if you go back. We were fairly commonly over the years, there were the times, there might be. A lot of not communication about the office not being open. So whatever we do, we just want to have more communication as to people so they're aware.
Yeah, it should be predictable. Well, one, one alternative I would toss out too, sort of piggybacking after that thought. Is um potentially you could have like the office closed on Mondays, right? Because Monday typically isn't. It is a common day for offices to be closed of various different sorts. And it's the day that. That we have meetings, planning commission has meetings so that your hours are switched to the evening. So you wouldn't necessarily be working in a day. But you'd be here in the evening. Um, so as, as long as it's predictable for the town and it's communicated. I think it works, but it's just something we better decide quickly because we're gonna run into that problem and we don't wanna.
They just work around that.
Yeah, so.
Well, the DMV closed, I mean, basically your citizen walks up the steps, they go through the window. And DMV says, there's no one in the town office today and they walk out. Because even though they were town employees. They did not provide any functions of the town except for the fact that I think they issued fishing and hunting licenses that. You all used to do. And they assumed that duty. I mean, you know, I could sit up here, you know, for free and say, oh, yeah, they're closed. Or you could hit a locked door or, you know, you can close on particular days, but uh. DMV closing has nothing to do with town functions. It just so was a body.
I understand. I understand that. But if something had to be left, a package or this or that, you know, that could be. Picked up or dropped off or something, right? Can I leave this for something? If you went out for two hours and somebody else wasn't in the office, you had somebody here, you didn't have to lock everything up, et cetera. So it just will change the work pattern.
Mail slot on the front porch, like everybody will say. You know.
Think Mondays was to kind of wrap up the federal office and stuff.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a reasonable, but I mean, it's up to. The council at large to decide how they wanna hand, how y'all wanna handle that.
I hope we were talking about DMV, excuse me, Dan, sure, you, you were being very nice to raise your hand, but um. I've had some talks with some folks like, and you all probably have about DMV closing. Um, it seemed to be a lot of confusion about it. I think we ought to put something on our website. Put something out where the public has access to it and just make it just plain and simple. From the history of DMV, from day one until June twenty-second of this year. We paid out this amount of money. We received this amount of money. It doesn't work. Thank you. And plain and simple.
Who should issue that? We had that question with Davis's email.
Wrap letter for that woman we wrote that I thought maybe you should do it. Do you feel comfortable doing that, Ronnie? I'd love you to send that. I sent it to you.
What woman?
Ms. Davis.
I've already answered her.
All right.
Well, yeah, but a lot of other people need to be.
I know what you mean.
So we're gonna do an article on that perhaps and for the Scottsville Monthly.
Uh, it's no do, do an article on something that's not around anymore.
Well, I think it is. I think it's necessary to communicate with the public.
I don't, the, the new Scottsville Monthly is not the old Scottsville Monthly. I get called and say, can you do an article on this or that or the other? If he calls me and says, can you do an article on the DMV closing? I'd be happy to do one.
Well, you know what?
You might not like it.
What, what might be, what might be helpful? Just as a, you might say, a compromise suggestion is. We, I think we had a press release or some, whatever the information is, whatever the information we, you know, that's. That was closed on this date. There was a town budget discussion in the meeting. It was decided, blah, blah. It, you know, just to have a, a page or two synopsis, I think could be helpful in terms of explaining it and. And the other thing I, I, I also wanted to say, my recommendation would be, I would ask our. Interim administrator and staff to say, could you recommend to us, maybe by next week? What you think hours could look like? In other words, I would. I would ask for your, how it looks, works in your daily schedule, how it works for you all. What recommendation would you make to the council? As to what you think, both understanding the needs of the town and your personal schedule and the. Give, give a couple of options to the, to the council. That would be my suggestion. I would, I'd rather hear from you than you hear from us, so to speak. Meaning, we, we have a gap or a decrease in service. Given both of your limitations, how would you see it? And then we as a council could take that and then. Government services could look at it or we can talk about it. Or again, I don't wanna tie your hands down. I wanna make it as simple as possible.
I like the idea of a press release, though. I'm sure that VIT Congress would, you know, give you something, a paragraph, just something explaining. Doesn't have to go in great detail, but.
Sure.
I answered on Facebook and. Well, I think they need explanation and understanding what, what it is. It's very complicated. I, I wrote something, but I think, I'll send it to them. I'll send it to everybody. It's explained. People need to know that.
We can give you. Problem, schedule, but, and I haven't been doing it because my hours are really being consumed. I just like getting the work done. So I'm really not paying attention to the hours, but your county administrator or county. Town administrator will be attending meetings and that will leave only your clerk in the office. And what if that person's sick? I mean, it's gonna be hard to say we'll go close this day or this day, but. We could work out something where that is a set thing and then you'll have to make some arrangements. I mean, the matter is, we, we have a clerk and a town administrator. And we can't have a set schedule or close on Mondays or whatever. But people have to understand, we don't have thirty people working here. Sometimes the town administrator is in a meeting and. The clerk might call out sick and it's just. Close. I, I mean, that, you know, that just, sometimes like happen, isn't it?
No, yeah, but trying to minimize like the frustration of people. Cause I, I know even now, like I've been up in the office sometimes when people have come for DMV and the DMV people aren't here. And they're like frustrated. I took up work today to come in and get this done and now nobody's here, right? So I just wanna try to do what we can to limit that frustration. Um. I realize that there's always gonna be exceptions to that, but I think to the degree that we can get in front of it would be a good thing.
I, I think there could be a little bit more communication, but I also want to stress. That you need to provide staff with some discretion and some flexibility because the same point of two staff members. I know we will both attend outreach events for the town, doing town business and sometimes it is to close down or. Uh, ARB, I had to leave the office and close it because I need to take pictures of ARB to respond to Jim and to figure out our inventory. So I think it, I think some discretion and some understanding of uh. Your staff's best intentions with their time. Appreciate it.
Oh, and believe me, I'm not being critical about staff's time at all. I'm just being sensitive to the other, you know, to the general town. You know, to the general town residents and others who come and want to discuss an important matter and nobody's here. That's all.
You know, you really don't get it. We don't take it. Last Monday I spent thirteen hours and I was out of the building ten minutes. So, but, and some, a new town administrator might think, you know, much of that, but. That I don't see lunch breaks. And so we'll work on some.
I think it's good for you to make the suggestion how you think we can best limit that, right? I mean, I, I just thought maybe we should close on Mondays, but it can be anything. As long as it works with you, just to minimize it, again, with the realization that it will not uh be perfect.
And I think it's a notice on the door, you know, if you're going to be gone for two hours, say, town opened at eleven o'clock today. You know, just so people.
Yeah.
I think that'll be because of the DMV because and work will take a little bit of time. Despite Facebook posts and.
Yeah, if there's nobody here, right? The downstairs will be locked, so we need a, a notice downstairs.
Okay. Town administrator, you wanna take over?
The first thing is, uh, I'll be providing you with your proposed planning and zoning fee schedule that I provided you all with. It's my understanding anticipated money, eventual money from this is already in the budget. So if you all have approved. But uh, and also talking, you know, this is a part of the clearance. So I've been trying to often look at it and know that. Regular meeting, I would be asking you all if we wanna move forward to a scheduled hearing. Um, if you don't wanna change it, then you wouldn't. So I'll be bringing that up next week at the meeting for formal action.
Is this on planning and zoning fee schedule? Yeah, okay, I got.
Uh, the next item is we did receive two proposals for our property liability blanket bond and working pump insurance. Um. I understand that that decision can be made within the office. Um, we did receive one from VRSA, students have now, and from Bank Corp. Uh, both of them are very good, very good working with local governments. Uh, Bank Corp, so however, is um. I think five thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars less than uh. We are essay. And also I did find within that, I went through the whole policy and within that, some of their liabilities are actually. Power price, for example, for law enforcement, the RSA is a thousand, a million dollar limit. And uh, Bank Corp has to me. And so that's, you can find better things there. And the reason I'm telling you about this is. Actually, if you all would want to stay with the company, you're with me on, then you all would have to procreate an, an additional. Uh, five thousand seven hundred and thirty-six. Dollars from your um eleven thousand. So, um. Um, if you are okay with it, we would work with changing for many more.
So the one company is actually going up on their rates?
They went up. They didn't go up a whole lot.
Not a lot, but.
But Bank Corp's is slower. I, I noticed in some emails that we're asked if we could proceed that proposal from Bank Corp, so. Uh, I asked them to send it to us and they sent it in April. I think it was in some of Mass email. So.
There are three fees in the same.
They are.
One is the Virginia certification, the county government, Virginia, this will be. So they kind of compete with each other. One year somebody will have a claim and no raise the fees and then they'll go to another company.
Shopping around.
I mean, yeah, the two billion dollar liability with the twenty-five hundred dollar deductible versus the million dollar. With the five thousand dollar deductible. Seems, and I mean, it seems like. I have worked with them and they're, they're. They're real good about claims and getting it done quickly. And I'm sure the other company is too.
They're both good. It's just, as you can tell, both are good.
Yeah. Uh, that could be to try and get them put in the door next year.
Yeah, this is probably, you won't know, but is there, I'm reminded, is there a history of. Stable pricing without any worries now, so I'm gonna jump over that. Next year.
I can't speak for them, but by assumptions is. Yeah, it's not gonna be any thousand.
They were to have a claim.
Isn't that true across the board?
It's very, it's almost a hundred years. One of these organizations. They're both alive. They're both excellent, excellent.
Okay, we get proposals each year so we can follow the same process to be really.
Next year. The next item is something you've already discussed about planning commission appointment. I don't know if you received a letter. Wanting to, we've sent everybody a letter, but. But I understand, I haven't seen, I understand the letter was received from Sharon, who was done, but, um. Well, I have got the handle, then I guess you could consider her and whoever else does action, whoever else. She has officially.
Can we have more than five of them? Maybe. Jim, you know, do we have more than five?
I said, no, is it, is it five?
It's probably.
Whatever the current number is, it's five on the plan. It's five, okay.
You could have more, but you'd have to manage your orders.
Oh, okay.
So let me ask you this. When somebody's term comes to a close like Molly says it about to. If that person. Expresses interest in serving again. And we all. Approve that, do we need to advertise for it still or open it up to anybody or just say? Okay, Molly wants to serve again. You can reappoint.
Yeah, we just accept. And nor- and normally. We, unless there's some reason, we just accept the person's again. That's that's kind of the common practice.
And that's common practice in most towns and villages?
I, I think.
It just seems kind of strange that you would, like, when we all come to the end of our terms, right, we have to be reelected, right? Or it's not just automatic. No, I understand that, but do you, Peter, if if somebody says, I want to stay in my seat, and somebody else says, well, actually, I want that seat, right, then what do you do? I know, that's what we're talking about.
I I think that's.
But sometimes, yeah. Your demographics and your situation probably not.
We, I think we're usually, I think it goes back, a- again, this is just my recollection, Mr. Mary, you can correct me, but. I think generally we are almost like a hockey team that's usually shorthanded, so.
That's fine. Your problem is not having too many people.
No, we're, we're trying. So if somebody says they want to serve, we're like, thank goodness that they want to keep serving. That's usually the the thought.
Well, sometimes you have to interview again, too. They asked me to interview again when my term was up. They said, you gotta come to the town council and interview. And I was like, wow, that's strange. So I don't know if there's a protocol for this.
You might be probably because you were elected and not appointed.
No, no, this was for, wasn't the planning commission. They said, you gotta have an interview.
Oh.
Were you in the seat already, Bill?
I was already in there. And they said, you gotta have an interview. Somebody's applied for it. You gotta have an interview.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, so then there's precedent there. So you resigned.
Well, he makes a good point in the sense, I I. I, again, my, my recollection over time is is we generally reappointed, but you mentioned in your case, somebody had applied also. Cause it's true, when the commission has expired. It is a reappointment and with that reappointment, it is the decision of the council to.
And I think that is for Shannon.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if he specified which spot it was.
I think it is.
The one that was open.
Yes.
The one that was open.
He said, there's a position open. I'm interested, yeah, in serving.
And I still think we need to come up with some sort of understanding for that, at least tip back to him.
I agree.
What to do about that? Would you consider, uh, removing yourself and let him take over?
Well, there has to be a liaison.
Well, there can still be a liaison, but they don't have to be.
No, no.
They don't have to be on on the planning commission.
No, I think.
Yeah, he's a liaison means he's on the commission.
No, no, that's not true.
Go back and read about commissions. We've had this discussion so many times, I'm not gonna have it again.
Oh, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
We can have a discussion again.
We have to, we have, you and I have discussed this over and over and over. We're moving on to the next item.
Can't control like this.
I can if I want to.
Well, then I'm.
You were commissioner, you were the head of planning commission when you resigned. Are you trying to tell me that you were called in and asked?
I'm talking about this issue. I'm talking about.
Well, I'm talking about your statement about you were called in for an interview.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not talking, I'm not getting away from that. No, that's that's a different issue. This is an issue about. Uh, that, uh, that somebody on the planning commission or any commission has to be a voting member. That's, that's not written in any way.
Planning commission, his vote on, whoever votes on the planning commission. Is voting to recommend or not recommend an item. They're not voting to make anything happen.
We'll never get to it if we table it.
Let's get the Shannon Strasser thing straight first, then we'll worry about who's voting and who's not, okay?
I guess, I mean, that would be a question for Mr. Bowling. I guess the question would be. And it's a fair question that Counselor Heisen asked. What's the procedure? So if she said she was going to resign, is there a procedure?
What do you want the procedure to be?
Well, I'm not, I don't.
Because that's absolutely the answer. It's council, very, very, it's one procedure across the year. When somebody resigns or somebody's terminated and your discretion is. You can either afford the the member whose term ends for another term or you can. Uh, afford somebody else in their, in his or her place.
Well, I guess my question was, I don't know, to be technical. And and somebody would have to, and then Javier, maybe you know, I don't know if there was, was, was there an official letter that said? I resign and somebody, okay, and and who officially? Accepts the letter, so to speak, and what you're kind of saying is we set the, we.
I don't think the county administrator can set an reputation. I think that's really, it's, it's, it's. Presentation gets complicated. There are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of cases on that. Lots of people are sitting around with employees. Waiting for them to resign as soon as they do accept, you know, and they're not aware of this incident. I'm being funny, but I'm trying to explain the situation. So, um, in this kind of, this situation, you don't have any procedure, I mean, but if you don't want the person that has resigned to to have another term. Then that's the prerogative of the council to. Uh, have to afford somebody else. You can open it up for consideration or if you have another candidate, you can invite them in or you can interview both of them. It's, it's, it's as, it's as simple, simple or as complex as you want to make. And what the town has done in the past is if you haven't had a. A a huge volume of ready, willing and able volunteers for a number of offices, in particular. ARB and the planning, because of the time commitment and the. The the particular skills that are involved and level interest of the community. So you've had in the past, not talking about over the years, not just one or two years, but ten or fifteen years. You've had to go out and, uh, what's the word, scrounge the hastings? I don't know if that's the right term or not, but you had to drag, you had to find people and. Bring them forward and cultivate them to get them to take the, take the job. So if you're blessed with a bunch of candidates that want to serve on the planning commission. All of a sudden, then you've got a, uh, I guess it's a, a, a bounty of, of, of resources that want to do it. You have a decision to make when that happens. So I don't know if I'm being helpful, but it depend upon the circumstances in each particular case. Now, I'm reluctant to see you kind of set a precedent, establish a procedure. For something that that's really needs flexibility depending upon the circumstance in each particular case. Given that you're a very small town and you're looking for candidates often just serve particular situations. I don't know if that makes sense.
No, I, I just, all I'm gonna say is, Mr. Bowling, I think what you said actually was very helpful, and the reason I think it's helpful is because. It's no secret we've been through a volatile time as a town and in that volatility, people have had. Bearing emotions as they process things that have happened. Some people have felt run out of the town. Some people have been frustrated with the town. I think it's totally acceptable for somebody to think, no, I don't want to do this. No, I think I will. I mean, I've had similar thoughts myself. Um, so all I will say is, so, I mean, for my part. I think it's fully acceptable for somebody to have second thoughts and then to say, yeah, I think I want to be here. So, so for me, I think that's fine, but again, go back to what Counselor Heinsen, Heisen said, which I think is a good question. We do have somebody else who applied, and so what do we do with that person?
And you can decide that, well, we're gonna go ahead and stick with the horse we've got. Or you can say, since somebody said you resigned and in the interim, you went out and solicited and offered. So people could volunteer or appeal about it. You do that.
Did the council officially accept her resignation?
I, I don't think we did. I think we're aware. We never, yeah. Well, I don't think we.
I think it was accepted at the planning commission.
Yeah, I thought Lisa.
Lisa accepted it.
Well, what, what he's saying is, it's a, it's a, are you saying it's a town council thing, right?
Yes.
It's not a planning, it's not, it's in other words, so. We didn't officially say, we, I think, I think.
He never officially said, we accept or we don't accept. That's my experience.
I mean, I, I, I mean, on a personal level.
This is a six hundred person town.
Right. On, on a personal level, I encourage her to stay on the commission because she's a good commissioner. They're all.
Somebody else went, I guess somebody solicited.
Yeah, so the town administrator accepted it and then the solicitor.
Yeah, so he said, could be one of those looking for bodies, you know, good, good people serve. And he found somebody who said, yeah, I'll serve, right? So that's a dilemma. So how do you want to, how do you want to deal with it? That's, that's your decision.
And then we should be consistent. Yeah, we should be consistent.
Jim, I believe.
I agree.
I believe it's in our code that the, the, the town administrator is the planning commissioner. So he can't, he couldn't accept the resignation.
The planning, the town administrators, the zoning committees.
No, I don't think, I mean, I think ultimately your form is.
Maybe I've got.
All come from town council.
Maybe I've got it, yeah.
Accepted this person's expectation is what I'm trying to say.
I think the chair of the planning commission did. It was my understanding that she did. I could be totally wrong.
But what, but what does council want to do? We're arguing about how many angels sit on a pin there. Is this a good planning commission member? You want a board or?
She's a good planning council.
Well, the other thing you don't want to do, uh, with the other person is you don't want to have essentially the planning commission going, yeah, right, stick with this person and then bring them in for a whole meeting or something. Maybe drop in a letter or maybe, you know, saying, hey, you know, we don't want to make you upset here, anything more interesting. I don't know. Either person.
Both, yeah, and she technically didn't resign. She was at the last meeting, so maybe she's. She's still.
And she's been at, she's actually been at all the meetings.
Went to the next meeting even though she resigned.
It's just a dilemma. It's a one-off, but we should be consistent in the future for how we handle it. How do we want to handle it? Do you want her to stay on without interviewing this other person? Then we have to send them a letter. Or you interview both and pick the one you like. Which one do you want?
I, I mean, my, my recommendation, again, this is, this, I. I think it's unfortunate the process that happened, but I would recommend that she stay. I think it's good for the town. Again, good faith in the sense that there's been a lot of. People who've struggled with a lot of things and people, we've been through a lot of stuff. I think it's good faith to the planning commissioner to say. You made it a little challenging for us, but we'd like you to stay. And the person who, the person who. Who applied, we say, thank you for, at your application, openings happen, we'll keep you in mind.
Yeah, I think they did accept her rescinding her resignation. So, okay, so we're going to.
A question goes, okay, I, I kind of like to.
So we're.
Does she stay on as under current term or is this her new term start now?
No, no, she's.
Current term.
Her current terms. So I think.
We let she.
Both of them say, look, this has happened now. Are you committed to staying on throughout this, through your term? And then the other one write to him and say, you know, there was a glitch, we apologize that we, and.
Yeah, we just need a letter to go out to the other candidate. That's all.
Take care. Send us Steve and a letter.
Oh, I can send Shannon. We just have a picture she's committed.
Okay, um.
Nobody can guarantee.
Ms. Carter, you want to continue on down your list?
The other is, we've already talked about pointing two people to the round table meeting with VDOT, so I'll have that on the agenda. So these are just things I wanted to bring in the work session, so we didn't have long discussions during the regular.
About the VDOT. Now, is that, is that about safe passage of VDOT or is it about, is that anything about VDOT? VDOT roundtable.
Is there anything about VDOT?
Yeah, do you know the, the agenda for that?
I think it's about sidewalk design as it relates to the comprehensive plan.
I just said, establishing this committee will be good for other things.
It's an opportunity to get answers on potential future questions and things like that.
Well, I don't. Okay, well, this can read it and I was probably sure the public.
Can you?
Supervise a price to maybe talk about the, the roads that need retaking. Talk about that.
Right, the VDOT approval. Everyone.
Hey, let's, let's pay attention to our.
The closure date for DMV is the twenty second of June and we will. Be posting on the website and get, trying to get the word out. Uh, and Molly has been working really hard on the Batto, that's a little. And, uh, fourth of July, so we'll give an update.
Yeah, so I think some people wanted to get an update on Batto. So it's running smoothly. I'm working with ABC and like with the chief, um, about the possibility of refreshment area like we did last year. But I need to do a little bit of outreach to our local businesses to make sure everybody's on board. Um, beyond that, we have, uh, two bands for the afternoon. And I was able to get some food vendors, uh, to kind of. Uh, hopefully get people in off the boat landing it into town, grab some meat, a little bit of music and then just enjoy, uh. Maine and Valley. Um, beyond that, um, we've already communicated as staff about. Um, priorities with maintenance around bathrooms, power washing, uh, grass and benches. And a while back ago, I already ordered, uh, portable toilets and we'll set out the shower and wet stuff. So, yeah.
I've been talking with Will, who runs the little basket around the fountain, just about, cause he's pretty involved with town society coming out here. And I asked him what his expectations were and said, are you happy with anything? It sounds like you've got a good, uh. Good thing running there. The only thing I would add to that is that the rivers.
The rivers are gonna be really well if we don't get it ready this week. It's already.
I need a three feet right now.
Be walking the Batto.
I went from, you know, Warren Berry, always gospel yesterday and. It was.
Ten hours?
That's gonna hang them up.
Let's say we're mixed village or one's third, which I'm not sure that they're gonna do, or we get a really big.
Once we know that.
We didn't want to hang, I don't know.
But if we're expecting the baton, at the rear door clock on one say.
And that's a welcome as well. It's basically, um, don't wait up. If you're gonna miss something, it's good to have a good time. Oh, I suspect.
The other thing is, it's actually kind of true. They could actually get damaged if it's slow.
Okay, uh, any questions for the town administrator?
I was, uh, says Javier now, the, uh, the festival is the twenty first, day is the twelfth. And they. Um, do we have a club that's gonna fix the toilets?
For Canal Basin?
Yeah, the ones I talked about with you last week, you said you.
So I, I talked to Danzy about, uh, Farmer's Market and I'll do a tour with them for Canal Basin. Uh, he seemed pretty receptive to helping me out, uh, in regards to getting it all in order.
All right.
But we got plenty of portables too, just for whatever crowd we get.
Well, you know, when you got two bands on the platform down there in the bathroom, you know, right around the corner, I might look for.
Oh, yeah.
And also, I've, I've been going down a couple of times a week. Blowing, getting rid of some weeds, getting rid of some debris. Um, can you all tell Cody? To get the heavy debris out of, uh, the, the middle boat, the broken boards and stuff. I don't want to put them in my car and haul them away. Um, I've come close to doing that. I am going down Saturday with a shop vac and vacuum the small stuff out. But, uh, the big stuff I don't want to handle. You know, it, it, it looks better down there.
We'll probably be working on that next week.
And you got the notice from Jack about the brush that was overgrown into the sidewalk area?
Yes.
Could you ask Cody to trim that?
Yeah, I'm on it.
Okay.
All right, item three is our comprehensive plan update, which we're carrying over to a future time. Thank you, Mr. Lewis, for being here this evening, but, uh, we will defer you to another date. Cause we like to go home by midnight. Okay. Carryover topics, we're gonna turn this over to Ms. Mars for the next couple of items.
Just before I get to that, Javier, did you print out or Becky, did you print out the maps? Yeah, can you get that before we get to there? Okay, website update quickly. I told you, um. We're going to, uh, hopefully have the content. Now, the company is doing the content migration for us. We're gonna have a meeting this week on Wednesday to just look at the high level. Content will be migrated in. Staff and whoever wants to be trained on content moderation will be trained in July. So. We should be live hopefully sometime in August. Grant strategies, um, I'm currently writing a grant to submit. It's, it's due the end of this month. I'm titling it Main Street Revitalization. It's a grant, a private grant through T-Mobile for the max of fifty thousand dollars. I've applied for thirty five thousand dollars in four categories. Um, promoting walkability, which would include, um, Eddie, to your point about signs along the streets and things like that. Um, we talked about crosswalks and accessibility. Um, what are the other components? Historic preservation, the banner poles on our lights. And the banners, some of those banner poles are all bent, the banners don't fit correctly. So it would go to that. So I've investigated some pricing around that. And then, um. A potential plan for a dog park in town. That wouldn't be actually building the dog park, but looking at a site and whatnot. Before Matt left, uh, he indicated there might be three possible sites. I think the really, only really good site would probably be as part of the Ancre Nature Area. There was, um, he said we could use Bruce Park potentially for a dog park, but it's not quite big enough. And then he said there was a swath over near where the tire factory is at the entrance, but it turns out we don't think we own that. So, um.
I've looked into this a little bit, uh, you know, but this church has that grass field on top. If we can somehow convince them, maybe we pay for the fencing. And then that would be a kind of double win for us because I couldn't be on their insurance or liability at least for having it, which might be a risk to town.
Yeah.
And if they've been willing to do that, if you paid for it, then it'd be a great spot for it.
Right over here. They put a fence up there once, because we've, we've had them change it because they didn't do it to Cornday or B recently.
Another place that I looked at, so I think if you wanted to do that, at the top of, of the levee on the left side. You know, when, just before you get to the lake on the left side, there's, there's a fall out there. There's, there probably, you wouldn't need a full fence. But that would be a great place for the bathroom as well, but it wouldn't be in the entrance way, but you go up the hill. I don't know if you're able to talk about it. It's, it's.
Yeah.
I feel like for a dog park, we would need a full fence.
Yes, no, no, you do.
No, no, they, they, there's a ledge there, so they would, you could put a little ledge there, but they wouldn't go over that. But it, but that's pretty, pretty good place for.
Well, maybe we could walk there sometime. Though I'd be interested in going back there, but I just wanted to, to know from all of you. Do you have, oh, and the other provision is for signage, like Bill, you've been talking about welcome to Scottsville, you know, on both ends of twenty. I provisioned for that. So some small things in there. Do you all, are you all okay with me putting this forward?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then it is not a match grant. That's what I thought. So we've been working, um, Leslie Vernon and I have been working very hard on getting this. I don't know if we'll get it. I do need five letters of support. I talked to Javier this morning about that. Um, Mr. Mayor, it would be good for you if you don't mind. I've already drafted up a letter. If I could send it to you, to council, maybe scan, if we can get scanned to sign so that. They have, um. A sense that it's community wide.
Boys and girls club probably would be.
That's another good one. Yeah. Chamber would be good, getting Debbie Smith involved. So five letters of support I'll need from the community. Before that, and then I'll submit on the thirtieth and we'll cross our fingers. If you want, I'm happy to share the final draft with y'all if you're interested. Um, Leslie's still working on some of it. It needs a plan, a shovel ready plan, which is. Sort of hard because some of the components might have to be bid out, given the dollar amounts. Um, it turns out that those signs at the entrances can be upwards of. You know, three thousand dollars each. So you're looking at a six thousand dollars. Should we bid that or just contract it? I don't know. Um, I'll leave that to all of you, but I have relative dollar amounts in there and things like that. So I did want to brief you. Okay, um, on maps, you all have, we have talked about maps. Let me get a. Oh, thank you. Uh, we've talked about maps. We put a line item in the budget on maps, but. We talk about a lot, but we don't really, I don't think we're all on the same page on what we want. So I put this together to just talk about. And, and these are my observations, that there's three sort of categories of maps. There's visual maps and you'll see here, I gave a couple of examples. Of a town map, a tourist map. The town and the tourist map combined and sort of what they look like. If you look at the town map, it's sort of. More artistic. So when I first talked about maps instead, you know, we did a budget of, I think, three thousand dollars was the line item for maps. Um. Some people said, well, we should be able to do that for free. Well, it depends on what we're talking about. If there's a lot of artistry. In this visual map, like what you see here in the second image is a tourist map with places that are highlighted. Or a town that's more sort of cartoony than, um, what we would normally see in a map. That would require more high-end graphic design and things like that. Um, the bottom image is sort of that town map with streets that interact. Then you have a category of, on the second page of utility maps. These are the, the, um. Maps that Jack has been working a lot on, uh, for the town in terms of parking. Evacuation zones, evacuation routes. Those are very sort of utilitarian. Um, a list of safety equipment and where it's placed around the towns that we know, having. You know, lock boxes so that we could get into certain buildings if there's an emergency. Those things are utility maps. And then there are navigation and trail maps. See on this, this last page, you might be, or Bill, you might be more familiar with. So I think before we think about maps and what we're gonna spend money on, I think we should have a discussion of what your actual expectations are. For maps and the different types and where we want them placed. Jack, did you?
So I'm running issue with the guy who actually resides and layout, how that will be impossible. From most people I've talked to have GRS, add arrows. So my plan actually is to add different color bricks out of town. So the only words that I talked to people about this the other day that would be. Um, by street, everything comes to by street point north. The average for all of them is just going to end some piece. Now it was shut.
Okay.
Have they confirmed that? Also, there is a evacuation plan I found in storage. They're gonna get a bin, anybody needs to see those. Um, there is, I do have to update the evacuation zone. I've discovered that, uh, Jack Street is now gonna be branched to one. Uh, I, I didn't know that it would be red, so I'm gonna change that quickly tonight and read this.
Okay, so we're re, uh, Jack is redoing a lot of the evacuation, emergency management type of maps. Revalidating them as we, you know. We're updating comprehensive plans and other things. So he's been working on those. But I think we need a discussion about what kind of map and where we want to place. We talked about maps for the kiosk. We're talking about maps as tourist maps, as people come into town, what we're gonna spend money on. I don't know that we need to decide here, but I think everybody should be aware there's different levels of maps of what are we actually looking for.
Well, I think, what I would say, I think they don't have two, two, uh, maps, thankfully, and the two in the, in the park. They have those, so people know when the park are getting those parks. That's kind of a done deal.
You mean, we have those.
We have two kiosks. I never liked the kiosk in the park a lot, but if we're gonna leave that one out, that should be, I think, a town map, a street map. And then I think the evacuation map should be either handout or, or online. I don't think we need to post that. Unless we post it downstairs, maybe in the, you know, on the bulletin board or something like that.
Well, what I, I think I'd like to do, and this is for a future discussion, because Jack is graciously. Offering his time to update a lot of our emergency management procedures. There were a lot, but it was embedded in like Mink Creek flooding and things like that. And it didn't cover all of the scenarios, like a train derailment or things like that. So just trying to get it all in one place so that we're not looking in different documents. And he's uncovered a lot of different sources that. Certainly I wasn't aware of.
I didn't remember there was more information back there.
Yeah, right, in the, in the. Okay.
So I've talked to our utility companies in Hamer County and Columbia Gas. They have offered to give us their maps.
Okay.
And we have Nelson County cable marked already. We have Appalachian power maps already done. So the gracious give us those maps. I asked you that, we don't release those to public. Due to the sign of them.
Right.
That we have a spreadsheet, all manhood covers marked already finished. And then we asked that we don't release those information after the public, due to, uh, due to having the utilities market.
Right, okay. So that's good. So he's uncovering all the different maps that we have for that, but I think we need to have some kind of discussion. Especially if we do get this grant, fingers crossed, toes crossed. Um, what do we actually want printed for tourists? And on the kiosk versus the trails and that kind of thing.
Council morse, one thing I was gonna say, just, so first of all, thank you for bringing this to our attention. If you look at these three kind of maps. As somebody who goes to a lot of tour sites. If you think of the u- utility map, that's a map. If you're in downtown DC or New York or something, you want to kind of know all these things are in proximity to each other.
Yeah.
In Scottsville. This would be of use in a limited way if you're trying to identify with the building, so to speak.
Right.
But in terms of what you see at tour sites or what you see at a park, it's very common. That there's some level of a combination, I would say, between a visual map and a navigation map where. It, on the one hand, if you're having something. That's inviting people to go into the park or into the town, there's some graphics in it that is. I guess I would say lively or friendly or inviting some, you know, there's different themes that people do. But there's also, to go back to Counselor Heisen's point, there's a practical aspect where. If you're showing a map of the town or you're showing a map of the Vanquish Nature Area, it's shown in a way. That is navigational, that helps you to understand.
Right.
Proximity to other things. So, I, I, first of all, I applaud your effort in giving us. Ideas that we talk about, and I think in the coming weeks, it'd be good for us to kind of hone in on. What kind of design? And I do think that the sense though, that when people. Come and look at it, they're already expecting some things by what they've seen elsewhere, so to speak, you know.
Yeah.
Of, of something that's common to what's done in our county parks or our state parks or whatever, as we maintain that level. It, it, it communicates to people, oh, this is that quality. You know, in other words, I can expect the site that I'm going to is. On par with this county park or in, in part of this state park because of the signage is similar, so to speak. So anyways, thank you.
Yeah, I just think we need to be on the same page. I'm sorry, Meredith.
Um, there's also. Not a slot, but like the box.
Right.
We could always do something like the navigation maps for the trails on the kiosk and then have like.
In the box.
In, in the box, right, that bottom right one.
Yeah.
Or the, the bottom one, the visual maps.
I like that too.
It would be like a great trifold to have.
I agree.
Designers in town and not ashamed that runs a print shop in Charles would give us a really good deal and.
That's great, because we just need to be on the same page of what we're gonna have and how we're gonna use it. That's all.
Did Kristen ever do a photo type of a map she worked?
We have not seen what she proposed.
Has she ever been asked to do that?
Well, she had been asked to give a proposal.
But we didn't see a look in fear. And I think we just should realize what we want and then say, can you do this if that's what we want, rather than just. Sort of backwards, you know. But I, I agree with you, Meredith. I think the trail maps on the kiosk. And then the town maps in the trifold would be good. And, and use them to put together. I'd love to see eventually a packet go and we distribute it to the camp sites and the. And the other places that are around, um, and collaborate with other counties so that they can direct traffic here.
Can that grant be used?
That's part of what the grant is for marketing brochures and materials. Yeah.
So we did, uh, the extra kiosk. I mean, you're talking about putting that up and so we're gonna do it.
My husband's still willing to do it. We need to know where it goes.
I think we're just gonna have to, I think we're gonna store it until we know what's going on over there because there's, I think we're supposed to have a parking lot there and, and, uh. You know, maybe some trails there.
Aren't the wetlands over there?
Uh, one of the. Uh, is Dash.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Looks like it was maybe hit with a law. Um, so a big, a big part of the. It's, yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's, you could replace them for.
I see.
Um.
Can we get Cody?
Picture of it's up. Which one is it?
Oh, yes, we've sent it.
The one right over. So this.
No.
All state, but the, is.
Oh, the corner of it's been.
I think just one. I think just one more of the, the bench needs to be repaired. Repair.
Well, that's unfortunate.
Yes, yeah, that'd probably be.
Any more on maps?
No, that's all I had on maps.
All right, Mr. Heisen, town maintenance.
Yeah, well, I just, well, I, I just think we need to probably have this on the agenda every month because, you know. The maintenance is such an important issue in the town, the government sort of been dealing with it for over a year, at least that I know of, that I've been on. And there's so many issues and, and it's almost impossible for, uh. You know, Becky to keep up with it and he can't follow. And I think we all need to kind of have a list of things that need to be done. And, uh, and pass it over somehow or people running a list of all those things that need to be done. There's so much maintenance.
Don't we have a list?
We have a list. Well, one of the, I don't know if it was unlisted, like say the, in front of the, the doctor's office, all those shrubs there and those. Those, uh, those, there's supposed to be some plants there, that needs to be done, but I, I just think we need to talk about maintenance. And then like you just, and just like Eddie was saying about the signs. You know, just to have, to talk about that every month until we get this, this kind of looking, looking good, you know, the, the toe part.
Yeah, especially since the festivals are coming up.
Toe part, you know, get it ready for Fourth of July, the curbs that, you know, that need the weed eating and things like. It's just like, there's so many issues and, and how do you prioritize it? And maybe some of it, we might have to see if we could contract out if we have the money. You know, we talked about that last year, uh, I mean, Kevin's not here, but he was talking about maybe. You know, in the summer, get a temporary person to help, because there's so much extra work in the summer, you know, besides the mowing, the weeding. You know, we can't keep up with the paintings and, and the trash cans and all these other things. So anyway, I think it's just a, a, a ongoing issue and probably the most important thing for the town to have, have it looking good.
Ms. Carter, just one suggestion and following up on what Counselor Heisen said. Given your experience, it might be, and you may have done it already, but as you eye the town, we certainly would be.
Yeah.
Interested in hearing, this has been an ongoing issue we've had for several years. There's been various counselors who've expressed concern, there's been citizens who've expressed concern about town maintenance. That's actually, it's a longstanding issue, so insights that you have would be much appreciated.
Well, already, and, and I've been, you know, issues have been brought to me and. Been watching and listening. There, I mean, there are, it's a lot of responsibility there, it really is, and if we pull Cody off of. One thing to go do another, then that gets behind and, and right now we're getting working hard to try to get ready for the boat festival. But, um, and you sent me some information too, so working on a plan, but that again, will be hard. Because of other things that come up. I, I really think maybe not in the winter, but in the summer months is a lot more.
It is, it is, it is. And we used to have a maintenance committee and we used to have volunteers doing it, talking about volunteer, we just don't have that anymore. And I know Eddie's volunteered a lot, and his wife's done a lot, but. It's just, it's overwhelming, when, when you look at the town. You know, Kevin quick particularly is been bringing this up for months and months.
Yeah.
You know, the Vanquish nature, there's pretty, pretty much unusable, the trails are unusable, I don't know, we should have known that, but. It's, it's overgrown so much, and I was out there yesterday.
It's kind of a, kind of a goofy thing, but I just got some goats.
We tried them to eat poison ivy on the levee and that didn't.
Didn't they eat the poison?
Alex, how much did the goat?
If they eat poison ivy, I'll hire them.
Uh, yeah, they ran down twenty.
Okay, anything?
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
You know, I just, I just think that if anybody sees something in town, it's, you know, we're all going to see different things that somehow have a list and pass it out to Becky.
And I, I do, you know, some of you all have, but not enough hands.
I know, you're right.
I know July the fourth might be on page here, but. For years, the parade has been sponsored by the Vol. Fire Department. Here recently I've seen. The discussion of all the fire department and the town of Scottsville. Well, on, um, um. It's probably about the fourth or fifth year in a row I've said this. Uh, you see the following on July the fourth. Um, having the parade, you know, manning the parade, and they do a great job. When cleanup time comes on July the fifth, you don't see them. And. Again, you know, I'm, I'm beating the dead horse, but if they get co-sponsored, they ought to co-clean up. And never.
I'll let you guys deliver that message.
But I heard a rumor that. South Hill. I wish I thought of this when.
Supervise a price.
Supervise the pricing still appears to confirm or deny. Slam more than usual.
That's not a rumor.
There was no, it's no rumor that they're going to have them at Stan'sville. I'm not sure what day, and Scottsville, that's the only two locations.
Wow.
And I met with Chief Jenkins and had a long conversation. He is on top of it as much as he can do with his, uh, regular offices, the auxiliary, the, uh. Alamo County and, uh, the security focus. So. Uh, we know what's coming.
All right, let's move along and get to Ms. Hines.
For the past week, we're like, oh, God. We had to plan this, and he's been working hard and the people that pitch in are really good.
Great.
So we're on, I hope they're meeting, and I expressed interest to Chief about what he needs from us.
And you've, you've got plenty of porta potties and stuff.
All right, let's get to Mayor this report, please.
Luckily mine is short, because I still haven't seen the resumes, I get to see them this week.
Okay.
Um, when does it close, Meredith?
Yesterday.
That's what I said.
So.
Oh, Sunday?
Today, Sunday.
Okay, I thought it was Friday, but okay.
Today, day, the twelve today.
So. We are meeting on Saturday, one thirty, we're going to go through all of the resumes that came in, like I said, I haven't seen them yet. So if they can be sent to me in one file, you know, just all of them together, that would be awesome. I don't even know where they are right now. But, uh, yeah, so we're meeting on Saturday at one thirty here. Going to go through all of the resumes, get an air ad hoc shortlist, and then, um. On Monday, like, like I said, we're doing that on Saturday, on Monday. Um, so I should hopefully have a better update for you, we're going to contact on Monday all of the. Uh, applicants on our shortlist, get them interviewed. Try to make it in one day, you know, just do the half hour interviews, boom, 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 back to back, and then, uh. Get a gap three, wait and see, guys. So we won't have a gap to the three next Monday when I'm here, but hopefully that's Monday when I'm here, you know. And next week's meeting, we'll have a gap to the six.
Yeah, we're making progress.
Yeah, who's on your committee?
Travis and David.
Oh, great, good.
Can I say something about Monday?
Yes, sir.
Monday is, uh, Juneteenth.
Right.
That's a federal, state, county holiday.
Not a Scottsville holiday. We have a meeting Monday night.
Okay.
When it's a federal.
Yeah. It does not fall under our list of holidays, we have a meeting Monday night.
Just checking, because I always have to remind about Martin's King Day too.
I'm here, so.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Mayor, just a quick, just a quick.
I don't know if that looks good.
Just a quick question. Is it, what would it take? I'm not saying we.
I have no idea.
What it, would it take to, to move into the following day?
You'd have to advertise and.
Yeah, um. We have a meeting Monday night, and if you want to change it for next year, we'll work on changing it for next year. Right now, we have a meeting Monday night. Okay.
We talked about.
Ain't making any planners.
Would like it. Known that I have. A moral objection to that, but I will be here at the meeting.
These are, well, we put an agenda on top of it. Recognizing next year, and just so, you know, people that are.
Celebration will be on the twenty-fourth.
That's a great idea. Absolutely, it's a great idea.
If it falls, like I said, on a night, then that.
Well, we talked about moving our meetings to Tuesdays for this.
That would cover six situations.
That's right.
Just like Alamo County does.
Yep.
Anyway.
Okay, let's move on.
All right.
Back to the Marsha.
Um, okay, so before I move on, I, I just want to go back a little bit to the map discussion, sorry, Mr. Mayor, but, um. One thing that I admitted in that discussion is Jack has done a tremendous amount of work for us. And one thing that I talked to him about is potentially recognizing his role with the town. And not a paid position role, but something that gives him credibility that if he goes out and talks to other people. Or whatnot, he can at least have, oh, I'm the. Emergency management specialist with Scottsville or something like that.
Need more riding, yes, more brainness, or awareness, flipping fails, we need more of a magnify for very quickly. The state, we might need them, it'd be a lot easier than what we had in the previous, go through the state, what have you been doing, it'd be a lot quicker.
So I told him I would bring it up here tonight for you to consider. We don't necessarily have to vote tonight on it.
What we have to do with that, that would be sort of like hiring an unpaid town employee, we have to have a closed session and then we can discuss it.
Okay, all right, so there's a process. All right. Um, okay, on revenue sources, I thought that since we. The budget is behind us, that we want, might want to start turning our attention to additional revenue sources. We've talked about a whole lot of things, I think we're going to continue to chase our tails. And funds and having enough to do all of the things that we'd like to do for Scottsville. If we don't consider additional revenue sources, we've talked about a potential town tax. We have land that may not be utilized to its full capacity, we have other ideas for events and things like that. That perhaps we should have set aside some time to brainstorm for these additional ideas to potentially bring more money in. So that we have more latitude for capital projects.
When you say town tax, you mean like a property tax?
Most small towns have a town tax.
We went through all that last year, so we tried not to do it and we didn't do it, but we may have to do it.
We may have to, or we may want to. I think we should have just at least look at all of our options, we have open op, uh, office space now with DMV gone. Should we rent that out to somebody who has a little small business for copying or mailing or something that would go in? Well, there, I, I don't know, but I think we should at least consider that. So this was on the agenda only to say, can we schedule this at one of our future sessions? And will you all just kind of noodle on that between now and then? So that we come together and brainstorm on how we might get additional money into the town. I know some people have talked to some of the businesses in town, they're really not happy about the meals tax increase. It would be great if we can kind of shift the burden from just the businesses and, and share that a little bit more broadly. But it's just a thought. Okay.
And there's also in that regard, one of the things that Matt did very well was get grants, and so we can talk about grants.
Absolutely, Dan, that's a really great point, thank you. Grants is a big one, and we don't have like a whole cadre of grant writers, so how are we going to manage that? So, um, it's something that we need to put some thought into, so maybe after the holidays, maybe for our August. Agenda after the festivals are over. Can we agree to put that on the, as a working, part of our working session?
Sure.
And I'd just like to.
Javier, can you make note of this?
Think about this, from what I've seen so far. And ready the office, we bring in some rental and grants, bring in a lot of one-time things, projects. But when you enter your, your budget at one eleven thousand dollars between your expenditure and revenue, that's not actual. Budgets are a lot of guesswork, it really is, and you just try to stay within it. But if you want to move forward, you need some additional annual revenue. And that's what you need to be looking at for the future, or you could be stuck. Your camp, your camp, your businesses are doing all they can do, it's remarkable, they are. But your citizens are paying for vehicle supplies. They pay sales tax and meals tax, but you could do that anywhere you go. If you think about it, I mean, a lot of people complain about DMV. And some of these are what, paying forty dollars on year toward. The town's revenue.
It's just something for us to consider.
And your low revenues are coming good, inflations are.
Inflation numbers.
Can do, that people are paying, your, your businesses are paying, the bills pretty much have a few. But it's remarkable. But you do need, and she said you need to look at something for the future.
I looked into the property in Dogland, doing something like a hundred club there.
Yeah.
Membership, seemed pretty feasible, I don't know. I mean, people are paying like sixty dollars a year for dues. Not using anything with a great use for.
Absolutely.
Or selling.
Or sell at this point.
One time.
One chunk of the channing engine, we're not getting any more than.
Exactly. Yeah, I hate to give up our assets if we don't have to.
Things like the renewable tower, self, self powered tower.
Yeah, it's the same discussion there, right?
So.
So that's all I had on revenue.
Okay, anything else about the dog park?
No, we've covered that.
Covered that, anything else anybody?
Mr. Mayor, just, just so I say this correctly, if we don't deal with the dog park correctly, we're all going to be put in the doghouse.
Dog parks, like, community dog park, it's like community gardens, you know, this is urban kind of thing. I mean, that's, I mean, we have lots of places, I had a dog, and we have lots of places to walk dog, you go to the ball fields and have them run around. And the other thing is, if we have a dog park that's more maintenance, and we already have so many parks that we can't maintain. So I, I'm, I'm not really crazy about a dog park, let's it be very simple and easily to maintain and.
Where I'll disagree, those, if it looks like the water is splash park, but people want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
I know.
Yeah, and Flavanna has a really nice one, there's not a lot in the maintenance, there's just some water available, they put up some bowls, they have some fencing. And quite frankly, because the way the dogs traverse that, there is no grass. I think it would be great, it would walkable for people with their dogs, but, um.
Show you where that is.
Yeah.
It's a pretty good area.
Okay.
Okay.
We need a bathroom.
That's it.
Hey Buck, would you send me that, what you sent, that sustain this, so I can see what you said.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
You can't, it goes private communication between you and her.
Oh, but it did, oh.
But it's, it's, we don't, it's, it's. It's, it's a town function though, right?
Well, it went to town council and.
She said my name was on the distribution list, I answer her with a personal letter. And I do not have to share my personal letter to somebody in town with anybody.
No, but it is in a professional capacity.
Public relations, though, come on. We're getting too angry, too, too easily. Maybe, like, we need to have, we need to deal with this sometimes.